Good morning. Welcome to the August 22nd, 2016 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Jim Aberwater will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Jim?
Please bow and pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day and the opportunities that we have in this great county. Please grant us thoughtful deliberations today and wisdom as we make decisions for the betterment of our county. We especially ask that you watch over our first responders and our soldiers that's still serving overseas for us. In your name we pray. Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. You may be seated. Carl, roll, please, Gail.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Chip Pinion.
Here.
Pettis Reed. I had the wrong one, sorry. Steve Sandlin. He's not here either. Mike Boitt.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Who am I missing? And Lee. They both go.
And Charlotte P.
And Charlotte P. We have a quorum. Sorry about that.
I mean, we leave?
No, you have to stay.
Thank you, Gail. We have a quorum. At this time, we need to approve our minutes for the July 11th meeting. Mike Kush is not here this morning. I've asked Commissioner Jordan to review those meetings. You have the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I've looked over the minutes and didn't find anything wrong, so I'll make a motion to approve and submit it.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve July 11th minute meeting, meeting minutes. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. A couple of things this morning. It's come to our attention that David Jones with our codes department has announced his retirement. It's a good thing, David. Just too bad we gotta be old to retire, but, or older, I guess I ought to say. But congratulations. I think David will still be around till October and we have enjoyed that relationship for many, many years. I think Will said a little bit earlier, sometimes change is hard to take and us losing you will be hard for this county, but we'll endeavor to persevere.
Yeah, thanks.
Congratulations. Another announcement, Long Term Commissioner Veronica Buchanan has announced her resignation from this planning commission just for some personal reasons. She'll continue to serve on BZA and I guess there'll be an immediate search for her replacement. And we wish her well in the future as she's been a valuable member of this commission. Items withdrawn or deferred. 62C, item number 16-2048, Bruce Heights, has been withdrawn. And under new business, we have three items. Waiver request, preliminary plan approval, and final plat approval. 6A1 waiver request, item number 16-4007. Wallace and Carolyn Maples are requesting a waiver to allow off-site soil easement for property located at 5560 Elam Road.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good morning, commission members. Hope everybody's doing well.
Could I butt in just a minute before we move forward? You mentioned that Bruce Heights has been withdrawn, and Mr. Bruce is in the audience looking very confused at this moment. So is there a miscommunication somewhere?
No, sir. He knows that that's been withdrawn, but he has another item on the agenda.
Okay, alright. Well, I just saw his look of shock, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Everything's fine. Back on to the waiver request. The first waiver request that you stated is for Wallace and Carolyn Maples along Elam Road. The property is on your screens right now. This is an existing barn. There's a house that's been constructed right about in this area. It's actually right, it's pretty much ready to be moved into. The applicant would like to go ahead and track that portion of the property off from the parent tract. And in order to do that, however, the soil sites are over in this area. So what he's asking for is the ability to have a off-site soils waiver to access the home that's in this area so that house can still have their soils, as opposed to trying to make kind of a odd-shaped subdivision and leaving the barn on its own track. That's pretty much the extent of what this is asking for. I believe this is for his son, as I recall him saying. Mister and Ms. Maples are in the audience. They are present, so if you have questions, we'll be happy to answer them at this time. Even if this is granted today, this will have to be brought back for the planning commission as a final plat. Right now, he just wanted to go through the motions to make sure that the waiver is something the commission would be comfortable with before pursuing, getting a survey done.
Is it with primary and secondary soil sites?
Yes, here, everything.
And when you divide the property, it'd be barely a parallel line to that western line then, pretty straight line.
I would guess it'd probably be like something like this. It's probably what they'll end up doing. You know, I haven't seen, I don't think they really have any kind of a survey done at this point. But, I mean, regardless of how they were split it out, like I said, if they were to try to kind of do the lot in such a way that it would encompass that part of it, it might look a little awkward.
How many total acres?
The property itself is about eight acres in size. So I think he's only looking to split off a couple, actually a couple, it probably won't even go this far down, just a couple of acres, and then the soil easement would just be back in here. Kind of would have like a tight line all the way back.
This is for a family member, you said?
That's my understanding, yes. Your son, I believe. Said it was for your son?
Yes.
Yes, my son.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Subject to any staff comments if there are any.
Again, he'll just have to go through the subdivision plat process, but...
Thank you. We have a motion to approve, item number 16-4007. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Waiver request, item 6A2, item number 16-4008. Stan Vaught for Sam and Mary Toon is requesting a waiver to the fire hydrant requirements for property located along Alisona Road.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property, as you stated, is located along Alisona Road. Don't let, this north arrow appears to be going the wrong way. Alisona Road is actually to the north, as you're actually pointing down the other way, but regardless. Essentially what the applicant is asking to do, the property itself is about 104 acres in size. They're looking to split it off into large acreage tracts. You can see that there'd be one remaining tract down here, and this may be a little hard to see. I'll zoom in here in a little bit, but there'd be one existing tract here by the road, which would have its own road frontage. And then track way in the back here, you can see, would be the one that has the flag lot going all the way to it. And then what they're asking to do is to be able to split these three tracts off of here. You can see each one has its own soil site that they've identified. The issue comes in not so much of the fact that the number of lots off that easement are going to be okay. They're going to meet the requirements for the county. The issue's going to be, even if they had the ability to put a fire hydrant waiver, or a fire hydrant right here, excuse me, most of these lots, these three lots here are going to be pretty much outside of 1,000 feet. There's really just no way around that. So before the applicant goes and again does most of the survey work for the plat that will be required because there's multiple lots off of a private easement, they are going to have to, they wanted a request to see if they could get the fire hydrant waiver before moving forward with that. This would trigger the sprinkler requirements for those lots, and the applicant is aware of that. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
You said there's no problem with the access road.
Correct. Yeah, you're allowed to have three lots off a private easement. This lot, well, let me just zoom in here a little bit so we can see it a little better. Track one, being 55 acres, of course, it's the one that has the actual road frontage. You can see as it comes all the way down here. This remaining acreage down in this area, being about a little over five acres, would also not count as being on the easement. Even if they want to use that, that would really be up to them. They wouldn't be dependent on that easement. The three lots that would be dependent would be tracks four, three, and two. So you can have up to three being dependent on that easement. After that, that's when all the other requirements kick in as far as plan development, the access road having to be built, the county road specifications, those type things. But the way it's currently situated, he wouldn't trip those requirements yet.
So the existing farmhouse, is that on track four? Is that what the little square is there?
This is a soil site. Is that what you're talking about?
Uh, no, no.
I'm sorry. Oh, four, that's track one.
There's a very nice home that's been there for many years.
That'd be my guess, is probably what that is. It doesn't actually call out right there, but I would guess that that's probably what that's signifying.
Is there a maintenance agreement or anything on these other three?
Well, right now, right now, there's not because that right-of-way doesn't exist. They would have to create something like that if they went ahead and moved forward.
Is that part of our regulations, or is one person responsible for the whole?
Yes, sir, that says that they have to have some sort of a maintenance agreement amongst themselves to handle that because obviously the county wouldn't be responsible for dealing with that.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
A motion to approve.
Second.
And the second.
Gail, I'm not going to vote.
Alright.
You can make a note.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number 16-4008, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion carries as well. Thank you. Item submitted for preliminary plan approval, 6B1, item number 16-1014. Lewis Downs, section four, 22 lots on 10-plus acres zoned RM located off Rock Springs Midland Road. Stewart Springs LLC is the applicant, Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is the next section of Lewis Downs, the preliminary plan for that. As you can see, we've had some discuss, well, in the past, we've had some discussion about the water availability in this area for fire protection. As you recall, we discussed this at previous meetings, but there've been some waterline improvements in this area. So as far as fire protection is concerned, that shouldn't be an issue with this approval. As far as the comments are concerned, most of our comments have been addressed. There's really only one outstanding item, well, just a couple of outstanding items on here really. And they're minor, so nothing that can't be, let me zoom into this. One of the comments, lot 122, of course, is one of the lots, but for some reason, it's missing out of this chart. So they need to put that on there. Also, it shows that lot 153 has a little bit less than the required minimum lot area for the RM zone. Actually, it looks like they've made the changes over here, that the lot lines have been shifted that actually give it enough area. If you look at it, it's 102 by 148, which when you do the math is over 15,000 square feet, but just looks like they forgot to update this over here and then add the lot 122 into the chart. And then there was supposed to have been a setback detail. It was actually, the setback detail was right over in here. For God's sakes. There we go. There's supposed to be, there was a setback detail. I think they inadvertently left it off, but it was, needed to be revised, but they forgot to put it back on here. So again, minor issues. But beyond that, the plat's in pretty good order, or the plan's in pretty good order, so we'd recommend approval. And be happy to answer any questions.
Is there not supposed to be a representative here for things like this?
Well, usually someone from SEC is here. I know that, well, this is from SEC.
I know, but I mean, usually somebody from both companies here at these meetings.
Yes, you're right. They knew about this being on there. I don't know why no one's here. But again, the plat, the plan is in good order.
If everything's in order, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second. I have a motion to approve and a second, item number 16-1014. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Item submitted for final plat approval, 6C1, item number 16-2047. Bruce W. Gum Road Subdivision, two lots on 5-plus acres zoned RM located along West Gum Road. Don Bruce is the applicant, includes a waiver request to the fire hydrant requirements. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This area of the county may look familiar to you. You'll recall, within the last couple of months, we had a waiver request from Ms. Julie O'Gwynn. This is her property immediately to the east of that property. You recall that we had some discussions about her tracking up that land and how that was going to, how that was going to work. Ultimately, she ended up having, she's going to have one shared access drive, but have every lot that had, would have its own road frontage. Just as a little bit of background there. This is, again, the property immediately adjacent to that. The applicant recently purchased this. It's two tracts right over five acres, well, it's one tract over five acres. He's looking to split it into two tracts. The biggest issue that has, this has, is the same issue that Ms. O'Gwynn's property had, is the fact that you can't put a fire hydrant here. The closest line is about 1,000-plus feet down here, and you'd have to extend that line all the way down here. So he's just wanting to split this into two properties. This would not trigger the sprinkler requirement. There is also an existing field line area which is shown for adjacent property. So along with the fire hydrant waiver, if you do approve this, it would be subject to allowing this easement to continue. Again, it's a pre-existing easement, but I don't foresee any major issues with that. But with that, the applicant is present, Mr. Bruce, and will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
This is basically the same thing we gave Ms. O'Gwynn on the adjacent piece of property.
Correct. The only difference being-
And actually, this one being a little neater and cleaner because the other one kept being different configurations.
Right. And this one wouldn't trigger the sprinkler requirement where the other one had more than three lots. Well, three, three lots or greater.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second. A motion to approve and a second, item number 16-2047. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 16-2048 has been withdrawn. Submitted for final plat approval, 6C3. Item number 16-2053. Creek Spines, section one, phase four, six lots on 3.83 acres zoned RM located west of Old Lebanon Road. Silver Hill Partners LLC is the applicant. This also includes a waiver request to the fire hydrant requirements. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This plat and the next one both deal with the same subdivision. The preliminary plat for this section was-
Doug, Doug, excuse me. Mr. Bruce?
Can I make a comment? Thank y'all for the approval. And Mr. Jordan caught me by surprise while ago, the terminology he used. He said I'd withdrawn my application on my Bruce Heights, but I thought it was just like a postponement. You know, just postpone it a month.
It is.
That's what made me gulp. So, and I appreciate it.
Just the item was withdrawn, not, not your request, so it's been deferred.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Sorry for the misunderstanding. I'm sorry, Doug.
That's fine. Again, this tract, or I'm sorry, this plat and next plat deal with the same subdivision, so most of the comments I'm going to make here are going to be relevant to the next one as well. This preliminary plat was approved by the planning commission back in 2006. Previous sections have been recorded off of that preliminary plat, so it's locked in. So the preliminary plat has not expired. Does it need to be, go through reapprovals or anything? This final plat does appear to be consistent with the preliminary approval. There are a couple of housekeeping items that we did have. For the most part, again, this plat is in pretty good order. There is one item that we did have on lot 99. There's this, originally, there was some sort of a sinkhole in this area. And it's not noted on the plat, but if they were going to close it, then they would need to submit a closure report or at least show it on the plat that there was a sinkhole there. Regardless of what route they take, if they close it or if they just mark it, we still think there needs to be a mark on the plat that shows that there was something in this area. That way, at least somebody buying the lot may know that there was something there, even if it was closed. At least they knew that there was an issue that was taken care of. So beyond that issue, all our other comments have been addressed. And again, we'd recommend approval, subject to that comment being taken care of.
Thank you, Doug.
Drainage's good. Should be, it's next to Fall Creek. Yeah, you know, I mean, I make a motion to approve.
Second. A motion to approve and a second, including all staff comments.
Including all staff comments, exactly. You read my mind.
Thank you, Ma. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number 16-2053, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Final plat approval, 6C4, item number 16-2052. Creek Spines, section one, phase five, 26 slots on 14-plus acres zoned RM located west of Old Lebanon Road. Silver Hill Partners LLC is the applicant, includes a waiver request to the fire hydrant requirements. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Again, those comments I made during the last plan were applicable to this one as well. I did neglect to say that when this was originally approved, it was done, the whole subdivision was done with sprinkler system, so this is really a continuation of that. This isn't anything unusual for this development. Again, for the most part, our comments have been addressed. There is just a couple of things on here. This new road named Mirage Street. They do mention on here that they did get verification from 911 that that street is permissible to be used. We just would like a copy of that for the file. We'd like to keep those in the file just in case there's any questions. They also need to list the source used for the minimum pad and floor elevations. They do mention on our comments, when they responded to those, that the engineering plan was the source, but we'd like a little more detail as what that source was on the plan. And then they also labeled this back here, a sinkhole, sinkhole conservation and drainage easement, as we asked them to do. But beyond those couple of comments, and again, the fire hydrant waiver that was part of this request, as is the last one, this plan appears to be in good order.
Doug, I have a question. I mean, you said that preliminary was approved in 2006. Have we, what regs have changed? What regulations have changed since that time? Would it be significantly different if it came as a preliminary today?
If it came today, a lot of the stormwater requirements have changed since then, so yes, there'd be some pretty significant changes as far as detention and retention. You know, back in those days, they were allowed to discharge directly into a blue line stream. You know, that's not really the case anymore. There's a lot more regulations now. Katie, of course, can speak a lot more to this than I can, but there's a lot more regulations dealing not just with quantity, but quality being a huge issue that weren't in, and they weren't in existence when this went through.
That's what I, I knew was in that area, so I just wondered.
Other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve this one, subject to staff comments.
Second. I have a motion to approve and a second, item number 16-2052. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, too. Thank you. Final plat approval, item number 6C5. Item number 16-2054. South Haven, section two, 44 lots, 41 of which are buildable on 11.69 acre zone PUD located along Ocala Road. South Haven Development Group LLC is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The plat, of course, you've got it on your iPads, but you also have it on the screen here. You'll see, it's a little unusual in the respect that a final plat has three pages, but this one does. You don't see that terribly often, but every now and again, this is all the step area that has to be recorded. Of course, this is part of this section, and this is the other area. This is the, this would be the westernmost access. If you go a little further to the east is where section one is located. This property, of course, being located on Ocala Road, part of the South Haven development, planned unit development. Again, we had several comments on here. All of our comments have been addressed to our satisfaction. The one comment that I will make reference to is the fact that as part of their plan development requirements, the extension to Ocala Road and the improvements to Ocala and Almaville Road intersection, those need to be constructed prior to this section being recorded. The applicant is aware of that. They're ongoing right now in section one, working through that. They haven't recorded anything on section one yet. They do know that prior to recording anything in section one, if those improvements aren't done, they have to be bonded, for letter of credit, something to that effect. So they're progressing, but they're aware that before this is recorded, that they will have to have those improvements done. So with that, again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Doug, it says section two. Where's section one?
Section one would be to the, like, you see the hand here. Section one would be further over this way, to the east.
Where it comes back out on Ocala Road, over there.
Right, yeah. There's two entrances to Ocala Road, this being one of them. This is the westernmost access. You go a little further to the east, past the creek, that's where the first, first section is.
Before they can start developing this section, will the road improvements have to be made or planned or?
Before this is recorded, they have to have them done.
Okay.
Yeah, so they could probably do some grading and, you know, we'll allow that, but we're not going to allow them to record and start selling lots until those improvements are finished.
Very good.
And again, that's according to their plan development. You recall, they came through, I guess that was last year, trying to kind of shift that a little bit. But, you know, we were of the opinion that there should be some surety placed, and that's ultimately what ended up happening.
But we gave them section one. They'd have to put the bond up or a letter of credit.
That's right.
And they're moving dirt on that now.
Yes.
motions or recommendations?
Motion to approve. Subject to staff comments.
A motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Item number 16-2054. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Under old business, you recall, our last meeting, we had much discussion for Mr. Carl Mullins in that item number 16-A014. Doug, you have an update for us?
Yes, sir, I do. Long story short, he's not ready at this point. I've had a couple of different conversations with Mr. Mullins on this. The first conversation we had the day after the last planning commission meeting where we kind of went over the different things that we were looking for as far as a concept plan, something that kind of shows that there's enough room on the property to do what he wants to do. I think his biggest issue, though, is going to be with the soils area. We did find some documentation regarding the soils on adjacent property. There is an easement to it. But after discussions with our staff and the staff with the groundwater protection, Department of Water Resources next door to our office, the applicant really needs to have some conversations with them as far as what the septic needs are going to be and what the requirements are going to be. And at this time, he's working through that, so he wasn't ready to come through today. So at this point, we'll just put him on the next night, planning commission meeting agenda.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions on that item? Staff reports or other business, Doug?
I don't have anything else, sir.
Once again, David, thank you for your service, and we'll see you next couple of months.
I've got a comment whenever you're, before you adjourn. If you're-
You go first. Probably we're going to say about the same thing.
I'm a little concerned that we just approved four subdivision things with no representation here. We send people home or defer things without, when people don't show up, that we send people to the next meeting. We defer with the public, and these are professionals. And, and we approved them, and that's, I'm somewhat okay with that, but I don't, I think that's a bad precedent. I think if we're going to hold Joe Public responsible, if they're not here to ask for their variance or their waiver, whatever, our policy's always been to defer it, so- their variance or their waiver, whatever, our policy's always been to defer it, so I think we need to send a message to our engineering firms, and decide amongst ourselves if we're going to look at these without a representative here. We don't look at Mr. and Ms. Jones who want a variance, usually, and stuff, and here, and these are professionals who are getting paid to do this, and I think they ought to be here. It's our policy they're supposed to be here. I think we ought to decide what our policy is and live by it, because there are four subdivision items here that, in my opinion, could have been, or maybe should have been deferred, for lack of representation. And that's part of the rules, you play by the rules or you don't. Makes me a little uncomfortable, so I think we've been setting a bad precedent in the last few minutes doing that, because that could get out of hand real fast. And that's my two cents for it.
Doug, on behalf of the Planning Commission, can you communicate?
You said that before we...
If there's not a representative here, then there won't be, it'll be deferred.
That's the way it is on everything else.
Yeah.
I have a question, Doug. In our policy, is it required, or is it voluntary for representatives?
I mean, it's pretty much voluntary for something like that.
Yeah, add to our policy.
Right, well, now, understand, when it comes to plats, plat approvals and things, that there are statutory requirements in the state law that say you have to do it within so many days of after. Now, in this situation, and I don't have it right in front of me, but as memory serves, after you get the application, you've got so many days to get into front of a planning commission, then once the planning commission first considers it, then you've got so many days, I believe you have enough time in those situations to bump it a meeting if you had to. So, but that's just something to be aware of. But I understand where you're coming from, and quite frankly, it's very unusual for these folks to...
I feel sure they're going to be upset when they find out. They thought, they, there was probably a, everybody thought somebody else was coming, but I mean, but we hold the general public to that requirement, for the most part, for variances and everything else, rezonings and stuff, so...
But I'll be happy to draft a little memo, and we've done that before for other items.
There'll be somebody who watches meeting on TV, and I feel sure they'll hear about it, you know, but it just...
We'll be, we'll be happy to do that. Thank you, Doug.
I just want to say one thing about David retiring. I hope that the county has the, the good sense and the, and the applicants that use the common sense that David has used over the years, because both dealing with this body, but mainly as a regular citizen. And people ask me, and they'll say, I say, that's a codes issue, you need to go up and see David Jones, he'll help you work through it. So I just want to say, David, I appreciate your job and your, your willingness to put pressure when pressure needed to be put, and your willingness to work with, I know, some tricky situations over the years, so...
David's also going to be joining his wife Shirley, who retired a few months ago, and I'm not sure that, that Shirley's looking for him, forward to him being home. Our condolences, Shirley.
I just hope our next building co-director lives in my neighborhood, because I've been known to go catch him on his lawnmower to ask him about a question, whether he's a citizen, you know. It's awful easy to pull by and catch him on the lawnmower, so...
Anything else? Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, September the twelfth, six P.M., second floor of the courthouse, which will be subject to public hearings. Any other questions? We're adjourned, thank you.